All right, folks, I'm gonna call the meeting to order if you would rise with me. Do the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Purcell, would you like to lead us in prayer, please?
Sure. Our heavenly Father, God, as we gather here tonight, we just ask that you give our commissioners wisdom as they lead and make decisions. We just ask, Lord, that you watch over our nation, watch over our people. We give you all the praise for all that you've done, for we have these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bill. Evening, folks. If you haven't signed in on the sign up sheet, please do. We do have a full quorum. All three commissioners are present. First on the agenda is approval of minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from April 4th?
I don't have a motion.
I have a motion by Bob.
Oh, second.
Have a second by Dale. All in favor? Aye. Next on the agenda is approval of claims. I'll let Jim speak briefly while we're passing.
Sure. Commissioners, you have on your docket tonight, you have some consideration, not only with the claims, but looking at some possible ARC proposals, and you're definitely gonna have a discussion as far as the jail. So I'm gonna kinda go over there as quickly as I can of some fundamental numbers will be of great importance to you tonight. So first of all, as far as the claims docket, the actual docket, not including payroll or out of cycle claims for this month is $286,591.21. All of your major funds all have positive balance. This is a regular pattern. This is the regular pattern that you want. But December, January, February, March, and now here in April, there are positive balances. Particular note is in the general fund. As of this morning, the general fund had $861,024.41. You have in the claims docket itself, I'm gonna round up around $50,000, and you have some out of cycle claims. But just purely ballpark, that's still gonna leave about $800,000 after tonight's claims. Now, there's still payroll in April, but it's without any doubt going into settlement and going into the first half of the year, the general fund has met its first goal of remaining positive. It's not only just remain positive, meaning, you know, we've got $20,000 or $50,000 over, but even after the claims tonight, it's about $800,000 all on itself. So what importance is that number besides being positive? For reserves, what you would like to see in there as we head after settlement, you'd like to see for your long-term projects about $1.4 million in that balance, kind of a straight. So rather than using a balance called a zero, if you started at $1.4 million, then the LID or anything above that, you wanna kinda make that your base. If that can become the new base for Owen County, much more favorable interest rate, much more favorable looking at if something occurs. So I don't wanna downgrade it to $800,000 in there, but it's time, and the county has certainly worked towards a new goal. Going into May, there's gonna be a LID distribution of income, roughly around $211,000. Settlement, to my understanding, is looking at about a month away. Today is April 19th, I think, May 19th is the reconciliation of settlement day. It then still has to go through an approval, so the check wouldn't come in on the 19th. It would be a few days after that. But once that occurs, you're gonna get your property tax area settled. This is when you push the general fund to, well, I mean, just quite frankly, the largest balance that's been in there for about the past three years. That is exactly where you want that to be. Because when you look at this jail project, we'll get to it, it's interest rate, interest rate, interest rate, over, over, and over, and over. Not to be in the best position that Owen County is a good risk, and Owen County won't be. There's no concern about that. But sometimes it's easy just to look and say, oh, we gotta enter $1,000, what's 50 here, 40 here, or something. But we wanna look at 1.4, kinda get that mindset. I think you're gonna accomplish that goal in a little over 30 days. We'll be there with the settlement coming in and the new LID. Then looking at all of your other funds, EMS, local road and street, all of these all have the six digits. They're all $100,000 or more, and that's where you want it to go. So you have no problems with your claims docket tonight and the balances. Now, this is purely myself. It's not illegal, it's not unethical, but you've got two funds that are in the red. It's a grant fund, a prep fund. They're reimbursable. I know the reimbursement is coming, but each month I just see them get a little higher in the red. So I would like to kinda chat with those departments who come back here on May. Just make sure we get that money in. So what I'm saying, it's not, the one for like 9167, the hazard grant, it's $11,000 in the red. There's a $739 claim that puts $11,985. I think there's a phrase, what a pet peeve or something. It's just that, just I'd rather not see any fund in the red at all. They're reimbursable, but those are just two on the radar. So with step one, for your discussions and what you're gonna be looking at. You have a good balance in the general fund you have in 1233, which is a very important fund for the jail project. That's the correctional facility. The correctional facility, as of this morning, that's $820,0238.67. That's 1233. That is on the clock. That has a 22-year time limit, and then it's over, and it's a one in dot. About two years have went through there. That's the base or the funding for your jail project. The amount that comes in there, it's a fixed rate for this year, it's $71,882. You just multiply that by 12, and that'll tell you to the penny how much money is going to come in. That, commissioners, will not be enough to supply, theoretically, if we're talking about a $15 billion jail project. $71,000 a month, $800,000 in a year, it's not good enough. So there's going to have to be another direction of paying, paying the project. So now moving into the jail project and try and explain that. If we have roughly an $800,000 base, or be really more, let me be more specific for you. It's $862,593.96. That's how much money is going to come into there if not one penny is spent. You won't get any more, it's a fixed amount. If Owen County is considering a $15 million jail project, new jail, reconstruction, whatever project, just talking about a generic project. If we have an interest rate of roughly 6%, which may be beyond optimistic based on what's going on here, that would be an annual payment of approximately $1.3 million. 1.37, $768.35. So your $15 million jail project would cost $26 million, $155,367.9 cents. Now, what I'm presenting to you is purely theoretically or purely hypothetical. I mean, as far as the interest rate and determination. Now, commissioners, the jail, as far as the decision, is solely clearly within the discretion of the three of you. Go, no go. Now, again, there are some technical exceptions, but I mean, there's no point of going in and having these happen. So to give you kinda the information, where we would go with that, I'm just gonna give you a range. If the 6% interest rate was two, then it's a $917,000 payment. But if it's 8%, it's a $1.5 million. So that's why I'm just here maybe just drawing on and on and on about interest rate, interest rate, interest rate. We're talking about really millions of dollars over a 20-year period. Now, the only way to draw then, it has to be kinda considered pledge fund. So I'm just using generic language now. But for the most part, that after you've used everything in 1233, that $800,000, you can only go then either to the general fund, which is the $1,000, 1112 LID added, or 1170 public safety, which for this year is primarily being used for the sheriff's department. So anything in excess of $800,000, there has to be a draw. So when we're looking at that, it will be with, definitely with the county council involved as far as when they're looking at their budget. Just for easy, you know, in numbers, if we're just gonna say, you know, we need $700,000 or dollars, that would be it. That $700,000 needs to be the draw from the general fund, all the departments come from. The LID added, which has about $1 million worth of revenue, it's roughly about $84,000 a month, it's about $1 million. And there's appropriations there. Or from what, for at least this year, the sheriff's department. That brings in about $3 million for the whole year. But about 2.99 is already been appropriated. So there's, people heard me say over and over, it's about $63,000 difference between appropriating and what's left there. The reason I'm taking everyone's time going there is that this will be a substantial decision. You will, once this is made, will in fact, one of these three, or all three of these, based on the combination, in order to, first of all, then get the best interest rate, we wanna get that to 1.4 million. We already went through that. You have two other funds, not the ones I talked about, about the reimbursement. You have two historical funds that are in the red, and I'm gonna round up. I mean, it's not this, but it's about a million dollars. It's about $524,000 in the payroll area, and it's about $448,000 in a 9051 grant in 2019. Now, you're going to hear proposals on the ARC. One of the options would be, of course, it cannot be this easy. You can't just take the ARC money that's coming in in May, put $448,000 in one fund, and put $524 in the other. That you can't do. But in lost revenue or lost recovery, the county council could then basically appropriate. And this is just purely theoretical. But it could start paying the salary portion, the wages. There's a 10,000 series of about $500,000. So rather than pull $500,000 out of the general fund, it would be paid out of the ARC money. That ARC appropriation would pay. Why do that? Well, you raised then the general fund, that $524,000. You take that and you extinguish your debt in the payroll benefits. Same thing can be done in the highway department.
Jim, can I stop you just a second for the general public and people that are watching on YouTube? Would you explain to them that we are tapped out on taxes to the citizens?
Sure.
Just touch on that.
There is not selling. On here, here's what can be done. The LID tax rate, 2.5, is the maximum. So the only way that there could be a higher income tax in Owen County is if the legislative, the state legislature rate raises that. I'm gonna make an assumption that that's not going to happen. And two, I'll make an assumption that I'm even more qualified, there's not a single person in Owen County who wants their income tax to go up another thousandth of a point.
Correct.
I think they're pretty safe there. So we're already, that's it. This revenue that is coming in, this is the revenue, you know, this rate. Now, it will change in dollar amount based on salaries and population, but the rate itself is it, there will be no more tax increase going on. Now, saying that, any other possible property tax, no one wants to hear, I mean, tax would be in lieu of property tax. No one is considering that. I'm not proposing that, but just so there's a total clarification. Theoretically, yes, there would be, there's a possibility of a property tax could be raised, but that's purely theoretical.
What we're talking about here this evening is using the tax that's already been collected and putting the rest of the burden on the general fund or the LID added funds of this county.
Correct. So you take, if you take approximately $1 million of the ARC money, there's roughly $2 million coming in in May. And if you take about $1 million of that, you could, doing this the proper way, clear, square your books. You could exhaust that, the two remaining funds that are in the red, in 51 and in payroll. Your books will then be cleared. That is what I would consider part two, absolutely critical in getting the proper bond and the proper interest rate. But Owen County at that point would be squared, with the exception of like a reimbursement grant. And every county has that. So you're gonna have, like, probation, I believe, has one of those type of accounts. They get claims, then they turn it down, and then they're reimbursed. But then we're talking about in the range of a few thousand, where we were talking about maybe $4 million a couple of years ago. In all practicality, you're talking about zero. So our books are squared. But once that ARC money is spent, I mean, once spent, it's gone. But that will clear that out. And at the same time, using the other million in the same fashion of lost revenue, your general fund is going up. You're paying it out of ARC. You would then exhaust the ARC funds. But the trade-off would be, you would have what I would consider a very healthy number in the general fund and squared books. You would be, I think, in the very best position of Owen County presenting themselves to a lender. But though, these all have to be taken into consideration to complain. So by that time, it's like about done, almost. Yeah, this is my, this is purely opinion. But at 6%, $11 million would be going to interest. This is purely my opinion, don't want that. What you would be wanting to work with when you're making your determination here on your project is also with the county council, that every dollar that can be placed on principal, every dollar that can be paid upfront is less than interest. I think that, in my opinion, rather than 20 years and pay $11 million, it'd be my advice to the county, for everyone that makes officials, is looking every possible way to make upfront principal payments. And I think that you have an avenue here to save the county millions of dollars. You just, $26 million personally to me, this truly personal payment, so it means nothing. Seems to be a lot for $15 million for the reconstruction. Now, final point of things, so what makes it just a little bit harder on top of all that, that's our internal. That is purely our internal things that we, as a county, county council, county commissioner would have the control. You have two external factors, I mean, going on. And Mr. Dan Zurgers here from Garland Construction, he'll dress up with a joke like that. You have what I'll just call generically, supply chain issues. As far as if, can we even get the materials? What's that time period? And the other thing that everyone in this room already knows, it would be to say it, is this historically 40-year high rate of inflation. That's an unknown. But just the same thing where anyone that's went out to buy a 2x4, a loaf of bread, has seen, it basically, depending on which conservative or less conservative type economist you want, is it 10%, is it 15%? I think all anyone, anyone would say, all I know is I go to the grocery when I was buying for $100, it sure seems like, hey, this costs me $175. I think those areas especially in construction. So one area is the inflationary, global standards. The second one, just to make it just a little bit harder, is interest rates that were historically low through basically our lifetimes are now going up rapidly. This is, the interest rate is an unknown. Both of these really weigh heavily into your project. The interest rate can be managed if we attack the principal as hard as we possibly can. So even if it's a higher one, if we're paying that off in five to seven years, which I know sounds outrageous, but I would ask those, just at least let's take a look at that if that's possible, would make a difference. The supply chain is beyond any expertise that I can give you. Is it better to wait? Is it better not to wait? Is it going to get worse? Are these building prices going to get worse? We're one of those. I think commissioners, from everything that I would see, and I can't tell you the future, but everyone that I've seen in this area is convinced that this country's heading into a recession. So in addition to your internal things, what we must take a look at, you're also talking about building the times of possible, you know, recessionary times. So with that, the reason I took the next time, I just wanna give you kind of the avenues and things that can come up in this discussion. Owen County has done a tremendous job of protecting itself in here. There is money in the bank, there's an opportunity to keep more money in the bank. And we're not talking about a recession where this county doesn't have to talk about layoffs or things like that. I don't think we should ever lose sight of that. We'll shut up in just 10 seconds. June 30th is a critical date, June 30th, June 30th, June 30th. You want as much money in your accounts, especially highway, EMS, every single one. I tried to leave any one out, general, on that date, you want that number up there. We're worried about July 1st, July 2nd, but June 30th is a critical day for the county. That's where projections are made. So in that, I apologize in that 15-minute monologue, but those I do think are important factors for you to look at. We're good on claims. Congratulations to all, made it the whole first half of the year. That's outstanding news. We just now have to ratchet up and make do with that.
Thank you, Jim. And so everybody knows, we'll be bringing, we're not open for public comment yet, sir. Be the end of the meeting, but be more than happy to take your question. Jim will be back with some more information for us here as we move into the jail project discussion. At this time moving forward, do I hear a motion to approve payroll? $244,790.8 cents.
I make a motion to approve payroll.
Oh, second.
I have a motion by Bob, a second by Dale. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, regular claims, $286,591.21.
I can motion to approve those claims, regular claims.
I have a motion by Bob, do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Dale. All in favor?
Aye.
Three O Sheila. And lastly, we have out of cycle claims at a total of $39,510.77. That includes utilities to Sheba, COVID clinic, and highway and county. I'm not sure exactly what all you've got included in.
Combined.
Combined, okay. So it totals $39,510.77. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve that.
I have a motion by Bob, a second by Dale. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This one's got four tabs, gentlemen. Gentlemen, ready to move on? All right. Next on the agenda, and it doesn't show on your sheet, is the American Rescue Plan update as of April the 8th. And I'll stop there and let the attorney discuss that.
Sure. Commissioners, this is just the rescue plan. This comes under the province of the commissioners. You have a plan dated as of April 8, 2022. There is no substantive change. It's just with the, there was an updated treasury rule that allows any county that receives under $10 million can put it in what we determine as buckets. This will put all of it in the provision of government service as the extent of reduction of revenue. This comes with a strong recommendation by Barnes and Thornburg to monitor your account. It doesn't change any factor. It just helps that, this will help the auditor make, will help with reporting. It would be less reporting, and it just puts it within the provision of the Department of Treasury. So what would happen is the amount in would be $3,919,962,000 will all be in that bucket. That does not change the fact that premium pay was already made, or the fact that you might wanna use some of that money in broadband infrastructure. All this does is comply with the treasury rule and should facilitate some reporting reports for the auditor. And that's such way, Jim.
Okay, thank you, Jim. And for those that aren't aware, we've already received $2 million of this money. $300,000 was dedicated to premium pay for employees. $1.6 million was dedicated to your roads and bridges. I think we're doing four or five bridges and paving, Greg?
Which gravel road.
What is that, three mile, four mile? Pretty good stretch of road. So that's what that's being used for, and there's $250,000 that's going into the infrastructure, whether that be sewer, water, or broadband. So we've dedicated that. With that being said, do I hear a motion to approve the American Rescue Plan update as of April the 8th?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Dale. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
There's no signature page on that looking. There is an additional $2 million coming in May. And with that being said, to the ARC program, the county council, I believe Ms. Chesser is here this evening to present that plan.
Commissioners? Hi. At our last county council meeting, it was decided to send me as a delegate to request to come for you and request a modification to the ARC plan to utilize the existing unused amount as lost revenue and use it to pay expenses that would otherwise be paid out of the general fund to be able to shore up the general fund and build the balance. So we are officially coming with our proposal and request that.
And that is to pay down the debt, as Jim mentioned, at the highway garage and also the payroll also the payroll clearing?
Yes.
So that'll wipe basically a million dollars of debt off the county and the rest to go towards paying bills instead of using the general.
Yeah, it was not the highway. We forgave the loans separately.
That's a different.
Right. It was payroll clearing and the, the other.
Yeah, ninety-five.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, just.
Yes, thank you, Anton. You're, you're correct. In a roundabout way, it'll all work out, but that is correct. Also, there was a payroll attachment to that, is that correct? I was at the meeting, I've heard that.
Right. I proposed that, but that was not, was not attached.
I would like to, if I can, Jim, can I, since these proposals come to us, can I ask for a amendment or a?
You, you can express any opinion, I mean, that you want. The actual appropriation goes with county count.
It goes back to them anyway, and I realize that. I would like to see the courthouse employees, and I think there's roughly twenty hourly employees that have been kind of left out of the pay increase circle for several years, to take a serious look at that. I know that it had been brought up about getting the part-time people up to full-time scale, but that affects the sheriff department, the highway department, that don't have the funds to do that anyway. So I think we need to take a really hard look at these offices here in the courthouse. Obviously, it doesn't affect the elected officials, but we've done a couple offices here. I think we need to take care of the rest of them as well. So I would like to add that.
I can't officially say that since, like I said, I wanted to attach that and that was not, not.
Do you agree with that, Bob?
Yes, I do.
If there's no other questions or concerns about taking the two, additional two million of ARPAP funds and using it in this manner, including the council looking at taking care of these courthouse employees that are desperately need to get taken care of, I'll ask for a motion to approve. Do I hear that motion?
Once you state it, yes, I make that motion.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam President.
Just want to kind of, just to clarify this. This will not happen overnight. So the steps will have to take.
And you're correct, Jim.
The, the money first has to go to the bank. Then it will go back to the county council, and then there will need to be the time between Barnes and Thornburg and Peters Consulting, the council's way, working out the mechanics. I think probably realistically you're looking at maybe July first of getting all these mechanics. But with the absolute understanding, we want to get these things resolved later in twelve-thirty-one of twenty-twenty-two. We do not want to carry any of this over to twenty-twenty-two.
Correct. And all of this that has been proposed is to affect how we move forward with the jail project is crucial. Without this being done, that cannot happen.
Right. I agree.
All right, thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
Okay, takes care of new and old business, I guess, combined there. Under new business, vacation of roadway.
This is a little, this is an ordinance that comes to the jurisdiction of the county council. It's an ordinance to vacate a roadway in Freedom, Indiana. Specifically, we're talking about a Jefferson Street. And I say that, but it's my understanding that there maybe has never been an actual Jefferson Street, or at least not for decades. So it's an area that at one time should have been or might have been Jefferson Street. It is no longer there. There's been a petition properly submitted to the building and planning director. The building director is here. Suzanne will be able to testify before we begin the public hearing that the proper notice was done, that somebody has put out all, all of these things. And then you will make a determination as commissioners, and this will be ordinance number twenty-twenty-two zero one four. It won't take long, we'll read this real quick, and then you'll make a decision on here. Now, I want to be crystal clear to the Hendricks, I believe the Hendricks are here too. This is merely to vacate it and does not give any possessive or any interest in the property. The Hendricks so much would want them to put this on their property as a separate procedure, they would have to retain the council and they would come back to you to then put this designated area, I believe, on their lot, lot eighty-eight. All this simply does is vacate this, that it's not a area where anyone is longer to travel through, although it's my understanding, I don't think that's been possible for a particular period of time.
So we're vacating it at this time, if so, so they can move forward?
They can, if you, if you approve this today, this gets recorded with, recorded by the recorder. It gives them the authority to go to private counsel to retain that and to seek to put this on their parcel and begin paying the taxes on this particular area. This is ordinance number twenty-twenty-two zero one four. It's an ordinance to vacate a roadway in Freedom, Indiana. Whereas county roadways and alleyways of Olom County are in the jurisdiction and control of board of commissioners of Olom County. Whereas pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six seven-three, plan out of the board of commissioners as the authority to grant a vacation roadway or alleyway under its jurisdiction and controls. Whereas Mr. and Mrs. Ronald and Barbara Hendricks of Lot eighty-eight in Freedom, Indiana, as evidenced by the warranty deed, have filed a violation, have filed a petition for vacation of the, with the Olom County Building Department, and have requested the Olom County Board of Commissioners to vacate the roadways and lots, specifically Jefferson Street. And whereas Mr. and Mrs. Ronald and Art Hendricks have provided evidence of their intent to request this vacation to adjacent landowners of record public intent in a newspaper of general circulation in Olom County, Indiana. Whereas, and a hearing of this petition was held by the Olom County Board of Commissioners on April eighteenth of twenty-twenty-two, and the affected landowners have been given notice and opportunity to be heard. Whereas a specific portion of this roadway has no general benefit to the public and only benefits a single set of fee title holders. Whereas the Olom County Board of Commissioners find the vacation of the roadways investor interest to public economy of Olom County, and the vacation will not interfere with the flow of traffic on the county road system. Now therefore, being ordained by the Olom County Board of Commissioners at this public thoroughfare, Jefferson Street, more particularly described below, should be vacated. Section one, Jefferson Street description. Jefferson Street is in the original town of Freedom, Olom County, Indiana, more typically described as follows. It's an unapproved street bordered by lots one sixty-nine, one seventy, one seventy-one, one seventy-two, eighty-eight, and eighty-three. From that depicting this area, the legal description to Hendricks, Jefferson Street parcel one eighty-eight is attached here too and made part of here, and marked as exhibit A. Section two, recording pursuant to the Indiana Code thirty-six seven-three twelve E. The clerk of the legislature, the podder, shall furnish a copy of this vacation orders to the county recorder for recording and also to the county auditor. For this order shall be in full force and effective pursuant to adoption, publication required by law, pursuant to adoption by the board of commissioners by Olom County, State of Indiana, in a regular meeting held on today, stated in the month of twenty-twenty-two. Olom County Board of Commissioners, great group president, private great vice president, Delton West Commission, she will read the order. This would be a public hearing, and you would be testifying from Suzanne and Greg and.
And at this time, I will open up public hearing. Suzanne, if you and Greg want to come on up, give me any discussion that you have on it, and then after that, if there's any public comment over the issue, we'll listen to that as well.
Suzanne, this is for all notifications.
Yeah. The Hendricks came in to file for their vacation of roadway after submitting all documentation. I submitted letters to all property owners around them to notify them of this vacation. There was also a notice in the newspaper of this meeting tonight. So I don't, I, I mean, I, I was the one that got all of the information, so.
You've not heard anything from anyone, any response?
No.
Everything good on your end, Greg?
Things good on my end. We've had no response out of the public. I went down, I've looked at the location, doesn't look like there's been a roadway in there for years upon years. I think it would be in the county's best interest to vacate.
Thank you both. Appreciate that very much. At this time, is there any public comment on this issue? Bill?
Are we closing? Because in there, nine-one-one address is along Jefferson. Or is it just a small?
Right. This part of Jefferson Street, the other part of Jefferson Street still is.
So not closing Jefferson.
No, this is just a small, small section.
So I can have reviews on nine-one-one.
No, no, no. Jefferson Street, what it was, was Jefferson Street went all the way through in a section that couldn't have a roadway. So it kind of dips down and it comes back up and then it would.
And all that's been checked out and we're good to go?
Yep.
Okay. Gentlemen, you have any comment on any of this? Jim, would you give me that ordinance number one more time?
That ordinance number is twenty-twenty-two dash zero one four.
One four.
Have the Hendricks, include the Hendricks, are here.
Yeah, they are here.
You have any concerns or moving forward? Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-two dash zero one four. Do I hear that motion?
I make that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Curry. Do I hear a second?
I'll play it.
Second by Mr. Dube. He's all in favor?
Aye.
Three-o. Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Twenty-five years ago, women through that same deal.
And sir, back there on the back row, I will let you speak here in a little bit when we get.
I'm here also.
Okay.
When they lay through them out in the beginning, it's.
Okay. Jail project update. Mr. Zerner? Hope you have some proposals for us this evening?
I miss Beth, I'm sorry. Beth, I apologize. Come on up here. She won't take two minutes. I apologize, Beth. And Beth, I assume that you're bringing to us a lease agreement or? Well, actually, what I, I would be the one signing the lease agreement since this is a foundation.
Correct. It is not a county.
So in your packets, I think that you had a copy of the lease agreement. You had also a copy of the agreement from the Olom County Community Foundation by the anonymous donor.
Yes.
For the Olom County CASA to have an office fund. Part of it is an endowment, a good part of it is pastory, so it will sustain an office and all of the expenses for that office out of that foundation fund. We have secured a spot at the Tivoli Theater upstairs, which is a nice space and it will also, for an office, and it will also give us, the lease will also give us the ability to use the room upstairs, the meeting room upstairs, for our new volunteer trainings, for in-service trainings, for events and meetings that we may need to have for CASA. So, and it will also give us the storage space that you need. It will also allow us to have an extra locking system on that office in particular, so that all the things will, no one will have access to that office except the director of the Tivoli and CASA. And there will be a locked file cabinet, four-door locked file cabinet in there as well, too, to, to secure as well, any confidential documents that we may have.
And I think you said included utilities as well, is that?
This fund is to pay for everything.
Everything, yes.
Furniture, utilities, legal fees, insurance fees. I will point out that the lease does state, and I had talked to Jim about this earlier too, that it does state that Olom County Preservations would like to be added as additional insured on the county's liability policy, and that this would be, the cost for that would be absorbed by this fund. And I think, didn't, you say it was about, well, no.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, he told me probably twenty, twenty-five dollars, but whatever he is.
Yeah, we'll have John Parmerly from Epic Insurance take care of that.
And that would need to begin at the point in which the lease begins.
Right, so the very, the very best way to do that, if you would come and tell him the exact date to put that on, and then they'll recover.
And our hope is to get lease in place by, for me, if with your approval, to sign the lease, we would have it in place as of May first. We've already been told by the Tivoli that we can start moving things in as soon as they get, we move down that, as prior to May first, if we lock you.
Yeah, and I think you and I have discussed this quite a bit, so I see no problem with it at all. Obviously, Mr. Parmerly will be the, the next piece of the puzzle.
Yes.
If you don't have his number and email, I can get that to you.
I do, John said.
Okay, you're good to go then. Do I hear a motion to approve the CASA? I don't know how I want to say this, lease agreement with the Tivoli, I'll leave it at that.
Mm-hmm.
That ought to cover it all. Do I hear that motion? I've got a motion by Dale. Do I hear a second?
Second.
That was second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Enjoy your new home.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right, Dan.
We haven't approached this, so I'm not exactly sure specifically what the commissioners want to accomplish tonight. The last time we were here, I believe you gave me two missions when I left. One was, was it possible to all to build a new jail for fifteen million dollars?
We had basically three requests, I think. One was to see if a new jail could be built for fifteen million dollars. What fifteen million dollars would get us in a refurbish and up to compliant? And then the other option was to use that fifteen to refurb and see if we could get any additional sales over and above where we're at.
Well, I understood it too.
Okay.
So Dan, I think we've answered.
Excuse me, is there anything else that you guys need to add to that? I mean, I know that we've discussed this back and forth, but I just want to make sure that there's no additional.
I'm here. So, so since that meeting, I furnished the sheriff, Attorney Brian, Commissioner Stroud you, copies of the recent bids for Sullivan and Knox County jails, which would indicate and validate that a new jail for this county would cost somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-two million dollars. So in my view, there is no option for a new jail at this point in time for fifteen million dollars. It's just not possible. But you might build one pot, but you can't build the core services or anything to support it. When you go to the whole package, plus you consider the demo and the other things we have in real estate, modifications have to be made, it's just not possible. We would love to do it, but it's just not possible. I might say, just since we met about sixty days ago, that we have seen a hundred and fifty basis points increase in interest rate, which is one and a half percent. So instead of financing this project at one and a half to two percent with the feds projecting seven more of those to occur yet this year, you're probably looking at a minimum of a six percent interest rate by the time we get this to bid. So that's a direct influence. We're also still incurring about one and a half to two percent per month increase in price of construction, just every month. It's, it's wild. So we have looked at the master study that we did last year on your current jail. The category could believe that with fifteen million all in, you can renovate the existing jail. We also would recommend that we put an add alternate as we do that for an additional twenty-five bids. So at whatever point in time we actually get to bid, we would bid the project primarily for the renovation, but also with an alternate for twenty-five additional bids. That could accomplish three or four things. One is, depending on where we are in this crazy construction market, if by chance in the next five or six months we see some relief, you could benefit from that. If your financing improves to the point where you might be able to absorb the cost of those extra twenty-five bids, that could all be built in the design program as we go. So I think it would give the county considerable flexibility once we get to bid point. So our recommendation, and let me back up so that there is no misunderstanding here. The only reservation that I have in this model is that if we refurbish the existing jail, I'm convinced we can get the county ten to fifteen more years' use out of this existing jail.
And that's what I asked you to give us, ten to fifteen?
I'm convinced we can get the ten to fifteen more years. The downside to that is, I'm not convinced we can give any more capacity yet. So considering. Standard around seventy-four or five today, probably the jail's rated, I think, at seventy-two. I mean, we're, we are potentially going to renovate this thing to get it full capacity if we can't add the other beds. That's just the only thing the county needs to be aware of. Does that answer your questions?
It does. I'd like to tell you, and I know that these gentlemen would like to tell you, that let's start this tomorrow, but we obviously have a financial house that the council needs to get in order. We've got some funds to move around, some debts to pay off before we're strong enough to borrow money. And I think that until that happens, which we're looking at a few months down the road, as you heard Jim, that's where we're at.
So we have studied this for the last three years. We know every piece of that jail right now. We're ready to go to work. I think all our documents have been turned in to Jim. So it's just a matter of when the county is comfortable, we work for you. Whenever you're ready to go, all you have to do is sign our documents and we'll get started. That's where we are.
I think that between the commissioners and the council, they'll be working diligently to get this in motion as fast as possible. Obviously, we can't until we get these ducks in a row.
I just want to be sure I've addressed all your questions to the extent.
Dan, I think you have, and you've done an outstanding job. You guys have been more than patient. As I told you before, in the three and a half years I've been here, I felt like I've carried this thing on my back. It's really nice to see that we might get to a point where we can actually do something.
I think we can buy the county considerable time. I think we can buy the county considerable time.
Well, we appreciate that. We appreciate what you've done for us, uh, to this point, and, uh, look forward to continuing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it very much. Jimmy, have you had a discussion at this time?
No, I mean, just, I would just be weird. What we're at is, I mean, you had the proposals. There's nothing that I honestly could say, let's just go the other way. I do not see any possible, like, this is going, in my opinion, that Owen County would have 32 million dollars plus an interest rate. I mean, I don't think that that's feasible in any way. A 15 million dollar reconstruction, as far as we're talking about just financially, I do think that I would stress the council, the commissioners working proactively, you know, in these next six weeks. Um, and I don't think, I think the other concern that I was writing down, the interest rate is a crisis, but the other one that concerns me is the 1.1 or 2% increase in construction cost each month. I think that's something that we have to be aware of as far as trying to figure, you know, out which path we want to go. Uh, the other problem will be, I mean, this is a public construction bid project. So, just, just by the fact of coming in and saying, "Go", that just means getting, getting the specifications, equipment ready, and then bidding out. Uh, by memory, I think we're talking about at a minimum a six-week period just to comply with 36112 on public construction. This would have to be bid out twice. There has to be public notification. We're going to do all these things. But what I'm just saying, it's not, we're not a private industry. So, even though today, as a group would say, you know what, let's go out and build a barn tomorrow, that is not our public construction. So, you've got to look in. You're talking six weeks and you have to allow, you know, people to come in, and then you want to evaluate, evaluate the bids that come in. Obviously, on a 15 million dollar bid packet, my recommendation is not going to be we would give that packet and evaluate it in 10 minutes here, you know, at the meeting. I mean, you would want to set a special meeting, have time to digest all of this. So, just commissioners, long as I keep in mind, and I'm going to repeat myself, and for everyone, gets interest rate and its principal, and you've got a timing pattern that the inflation, supply cost, and supply chain are not, are not working with this project, working against it.
That is correct. And also, I don't want anybody to think we're dragging our feet on this because we're not. Again, we've got to get our financial house in order. But once we sign those documents, there is no going back. We are in it for the long haul. And so, we're going to make sure that this thing is right, the county can afford it. We've cut every corner, every budget. We've looked at every dollar before we move forward with this. And again, and as you heard me tell Dan, and I'll tell Sam and any candidate out there that's running for sheriff, I'd like to start it tomorrow, but we're just not quite there yet. But we're going to get there. All right. With that being said, Sam.
I'm going to throw it to the non-alien current sheriff. It's good to see we've got all three sheriff's candidates here tonight. Uh, I'm pretty outspoken. I'm going to say what's on my mind. We've been dealing with this jail project for years and years and years now. Uh, the jail that's currently have diamond elements, there's only two jails in the state made in a bid like that, and, uh, all we're doing is polishing the turf. Take it for what it's worth. But if 15 million dollars is all we got, we got to do something. Whether that's bringing, you know, bringing this up to date, uh, doing a partial renovation and adding a few beds, or just spending 15 million dollars on all we can get on a new facility. You've got three choices. The commissioners will have to make that choice. I've told the taxpayers since I've been sheriff, and I've been working on this jail project before I was a sheriff, the one thing we cannot do is to burden the taxpayers with the payment we cannot make. Now, you talk about 15 million dollars. I don't care where you spend it. Brand new, renovation update, half and half, so and so forth. The correctional facility money only brings in 800,000 dollars a year. They're going to have to come up with another 5, 6, 700,000 dollars. I don't care what you do. Where are you going to get that money? My budget, total budget this year has been paid out of the public safety tax fund. Never has been for the history of Owen County. But it is this year to alleviate some of the pain that's on the general fund. Two council members are here tonight, and they will tell you the budget will be paid again next year out of the public safety fund. They have no choice. There is not enough money going around to make this work. Not at this time. Here is what we can talk about. We've got a million dollars' worth of debt that has to be paid. There's not a bank in Owen County with loan notes of 50 bucks right now because we're in debt. We have outstanding debts that have to be paid. That needs to be done further. We need to settle up our score, so to speak, clear the books. We need to do that. But when you talk about paying the 800,000 of the correctional facility money every year, it's a commandment for 20 years, you're still going to have to come up with the difference. Where are you going to take that out of? You going to take it away from your public safety money that goes to public safety? You going to cut a half million dollars? It's not, it doesn't seem logical. It's not feasible for public safety. Public safety now is structured, your two biggest issues in the county. We have to address them both. So, then it comes out of the general fund. So, for me, do we need a new jail? Absolutely. We're going to have to do something. If you're remodeling a jail and stuff like that, bringing up the state statutes and stuff, great. You get no more beds. You can't segregate, you can't classify. State statutes, you have to. There's rules and regulations. But I don't want to burden the taxpayers with a payment that we can't make. Gary made the comment, if you sign these documents, you're in it for 20 years. First thing you need to understand about that is if you sign the agreement and they do all the drafting and planning, stuff like that, the county commissioners should still come back and say, "Come on, we can't do the project." They can call Paul to it anytime they want, but they still have to pay for the designs and plans, so that money is spent. So, I would say I'm glad the three, the sheriff candidates are here because this is not going to change overnight. But there needs to be more and more meetings, but the financial end of it, the county's financial end of it, needs to be rectified before the guys ever make a decision on what they're going to do with the jail. The flip side to that, we've got a 36-year-old facility. I can count all the people here, on one hand, how many people's turned my facility, or the county's facility. I can count on one hand. Don't say anything bad about anybody. It's been an open invitation since I've been sheriff. Come down, take a look, but you won't be able to do it until after election. There's a reason. Come take a look at the jail. See what you're going to be spending your money on. Gary's been there. He's saying we've got problems. The jail is the county's number one biggest liability. Your jail. Nobody wants to spend 15 million dollars. We could have done this 12 years ago. We could have done it for 14 million dollars. We had no idea where our finances messed. Good thing we didn't start it.
Very good thing.
We couldn't have been troubled. So, before the commissioners make a decision, I would like the taxpayers, the candidates, the council, everybody, to come to these meetings and understand exactly what we're up against before we make a decision to spend 15 million in on a renovation or a new facility or whatever the case may be, because we've got to make sure that we can pay for it. If you want to cut the public safety tax money to pay for a facility, whether it's renovation or not, you cut your own throats.
Sam, appreciate it. We've had this discussion, you and I have had it for three and a half years. It is a big, uh, big problem on our plates up here, uh, for everyone in the county. And, uh, I, I'm positive that we're going to get through this some way, somehow. Uh, it's just going to take a lot of work.
This can't bear to somebody came before.
Exactly. Absolutely. And that's the part that is the hardest to explain to people. We do not have enough tax base coming into this county to support the things that we're trying to do here and have to do, from our roads to our jails to our buildings. Uh, we have to get some more citizens, some more housing, uh, to get these increases.
Hey, you guys land one quick thing.
Sure.
The jail is not the only project in this county that's facing. And I'm going to say or talk, not defend or... If anybody's been out to the county highway building, we get a good 70 mile hour wind, she's going to grind. I'm just saying that. The courthouse, we've got issues here at the courthouse that need to be addressed. So, we need to make sure that if something happens, we have revenue to take care of those issues as well. I definitely need, we all definitely need a jail, but we have to look beside just the jail project.
Sam, and I appreciate that. I really do. And you know that. We've got issues probably in every structure that we have in the county that needs to be addressed. And it's all a financial address. It's not like we can slap the coat of paint on it and go, "There we go." It's not that kind of problem.
One good thing about what they're, what they're doing here tonight for the, for the candidates and stuff like that, the state has recommendations for how to run your facility, believe me. A lot of most of the public don't know about those. But the commissioners are working towards a solution, working towards a solution with the council members and, and stuff like that. That, that shows good judgment when the state is coming down on them, that this, this, this states are in progress. You have to continue to be in progress moving forward when they come to look at stuff like this, so it's a start.
Again, thank you, Sam.
I'm sorry.
We're going to go to Chris, so you're shut down? Come on, Chris. Keep up the paper, I think, Chris.
All right. Well, as you guys know, I took off kind of short notice last week and went on vacation. I seen a window that I could get out of here and, and get a few days of, you know, about rest and relaxation, but get a few days out of the office anyway.
Clear your, clear your head a little bit, anyway.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, just kind of an update. Um, I was down there Wednesday, and I was in contact, um, up here the whole time because I knew we were expecting some bad weather on Wednesday. Actually, I went down there on Tuesday. We were expecting some bad weather on Wednesday. Um, Wednesday evening, I seen the assistant director, uh, send a page out to all of our employees that we needed a second or another ambulance brought up. Um, so, I told him why, I said, "Start packing. We're probably going back home." I figured tornado hit or something. Um, so I called him and, um, asked what was going on and, and, you know, was, you know, did I need to come back or anything? And, um, what I found out was the director of Morgan County had, EMS had died, and they were needing an ambulance to cover their area while they tried to get their feet back under and wrap their head around what happened. So, um, we supplied Morgan County an ambulance for, I think, three or four hours till they kind of got some other things lined up and, and everything. So, we covered, uh, Perrigan and Eminence area for a little while on Wednesday.
And Chris, I'll stop you there real quick. I want to thank you for contacting me while you were on vacation and notifying me of the situation and what you were dealing with, so I appreciate that.
So, um, they have asked if we can cover them this Wednesday from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the time of the funeral, so that their employees can go to the funeral. Um, when we, when Brandon passed away, uh, last summer, uh, they came over and, and took care of us when, when our paramedic passed away last year. So, they came over and covered us so we could go to the funeral, and I think we owe that back to them. Um, the, the funding for it just came out of my overtime funding. So, if, if that's okay with you guys, I plan on trying to get a truck put together to cover them.
And your budget supports that.
So, yeah, we've got, we've got the funding to, to support it. So, that's just kind of an update there. Um, did you guys receive bid specs for ambulance? I sent those to Jim a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, maybe. Yeah, I didn't know if they got forwarded on to you guys.
Yeah.
Set that 41 page.
41 pages.
I got it right here.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty detailed. Um, it's, it's, it's very detailed, uh, specs. And, um, we'd kind of like to start the process of, of putting out there for an ambulance, uh, replacement. If you guys recall, it's been going on three years since we've had an ambulance replaced. Um, I did learn that right now they're looking anywhere from 12 to 15 months from the time you order it till they can get it in.
I suggest that we... Get it out as soon as possible.
Yeah. Um, some considerations that I wanted to, to discuss also was, I'd like, Jim, how does this work? Did we put a cover letter together?
Sure. So, so what will happen, commissioners and Chris, you have before you the bid specification. Now, this would be, in essence, if we're doing public construction, these are the plans. Now, we need to build a bid packet from this. So, if you approve these specifications, uh, Chris and I can put together a bid packet and have that ready for your May 2nd meeting. Uh, it has to comply with Indiana Code 522.7. It's mandatory. Uh, there's no, there can be no deviations. And then the first publication could go out on May 11th. The second publication could go out May 18th, and you could have bids come back to you by June 6th of 2022. So, if this is acceptable, we'll take these bid specifications, put out a bid proposal packet, similar to the highway where we'll have, you know, when you bid, and then there are seven criteria that have, have to be on that bid packet.
And this includes cab chassis and the box, correct?
Yes, sir. Um, and that's, that's kind of where I was going, Jim, is in this cover letter, can we put in there, that we'd like can outline the expected delivery date from, and then, because if, you know, if, if one company, maybe it's $2,000 more, but they can get it to us in six months, or another company's, you know, the lowest bid, but it's going to take in 20 months.
Correct, and, and that would be, you could put that in, in your bid packet. And two, uh, there's an area about responsive, responsive and responsible bidders. So, that would give you a legitimate consideration. So, if someone, like, is a 175 and one is a 177, but there's an eight-month difference, uh, I mean, you, you could take that into consideration.
Sure. And then I also wanted to put in that with, with your guidance permission, um, additional costs, both, both negative and positive, for consideration for a Dodge chassis. Um, right now, right now, we're building on Chevrolet chassis because the frame height, um, is the correct height to where, when the box is set on there. There's, there's specifications on, on the deck height for the, for the ambulance box. Chevrolet chassis are, they set low enough that when that box is on there, the cots slide right in. They fit just, just perfect.
In this spec, Chris, do you have the power assist cots in this spec? I, I mean, I...
I don't believe they're in this spec.
Why don't we add that to that when we put that bid proposal together? I mean, I think it's well worth the time and the money.
Good. Well, where I was going with that other was, um, where there's a little bit of cost savings for the chassis by going to Ford. And we've not really looked at Dodge because until recently, ambulance manufacturers haven't really considered Dodge chassis that strongly. But where there's a savings to go to Ford, their frame height's higher, so they have to put either an air ride suspension on it or a hydraulic suspension, or when you open up the ambulances, it sets down lower, so the cost slides in.
Right.
So, I'd like to, I'd like to kind of consider, if we went with the Ford, how much would it cost to put that hydraulic system on? Is there going to be any savings there or not? So, um, so that's... So, um, so that's why I'd kind of like to put in that, i- it's for them to give us, you know, uh, costs both positive and negative for consideration of Ford and Dodge chassis.
Sure.
So.
I know that Lifeline, pretty much all theirs are the Chevrolet chassis as well, if I'm not mistaken, majority of them.
Uh, Southern Lifeline, Bloomington, yeah, Bloomington, Paoli and Bedford, yeah. North, they, they run F series, but they've got to put this system in that squats their rear end.
Right, so then you got another mechanical issue.
Yeah, so. So with your guys' approval of the specifications, I think.
We can work towards the bid packet for May second. So today, if these are, these are the specifications you want, we can approve those today, but no- nothing's gonna be bid out until, until the second.
And as long as they reach Chris's satisfaction, uh, I'll make a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
A motion myself, second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Was that an aye, Bob?
Yes.
Three aye. Anything else, Chris?
No, unless you guys have concerns, complaints, comments, anything.
Appreciate what you do.
All right, thank you very much.
Good evening. Kathleen, nine one one.
Um, so I don't have anything new to bring you. I just want, um, I guess to let you know, I want to get a policy to Jim, the attorney, um, to be able to take to the council at their Monday meeting. Um, and it would be a policy specific to dispatch, it'd be the one thousand series, similar to what I already have in place in the policy handbook. It has to do with benefits and wages, so that's why I would go to them, because they cover benefits and wages, even though it's in the personnel handbook. Um, but I just want to let you know that I would like to give a gem to try to work something out to take something to them.
I don't have a problem with that, Jimmy, you're all with her, so. Don't know that necessarily needs a vote.
No, just FYI, I'm gonna go to him to go to them.
There you go.
Um, and that's all I have unless you guys have anything for me, so you're aware of the other stuff that's going on.
Yep, got your email today on the slate, so, yep. Okay, Greggy, anything on the highway?
Not much, commissioners. Just let everybody know the, uh, bridge bids for Franklin Road and, um, Boss Hodge Lake have been advertised once. Construction continues on the Rocky Hill Road Bridge. Cruiser patching, uh, roads daily. On, Chad's handing out an email. On Thursday, I was contacted by Jennifer Music of Kinnick Nick Ridge. And I bring this before you because it's a little time sensitive for the folks that live up there. Uh, Kinnick Nick Ridge is a private road, and they had to inquire with the highway department in the county if, uh, we were willing to take that road over, because there may be some private ru- uh, funds to repair a bridge on that road through Governor Holcomb's office. I went up, I've, um, looked at the road. The road is in pretty sad shape. Uh, so it isn't anything until it's brought up to standard that we could take over. But they do have a bridge problem, commissioners, and it's been explained to me that the bridge, um, is no longer sufficient because something upstream has changed. They don't know whether it's logging, what, something has changed. But they had an opportunity, uh, to maybe get some funds to repair this bridge privately through the governor's office. But we have to, uh, inform them, uh, that we're not interested in picking up the road on the county inventory.
Well, i- it's our practice that it has to be brought up to county standards before we do that anyway. So if they can get private funding for their bridge, that's great. If they want to bring it up to county standards from there on, then we can take another look at it. But obviously, that's not gonna happen at this point. You guys got any comments on that? I mean, that's kind of.
Or you can private fund, yeah, then bring it up.
So with commissioners', uh, permission, I will draft a letter and get that out to them that the county is not interested in picking that road up on the inventory at this time.
At this time, at this time, yeah, I think that'll be fine, great.
Thank you, commissioners, that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
One last thing for, for. Hard scramble, uh, bid packet, we'll have that ready on May second. Uh, so the three bridges are either in construction or the packets are out, and then May second, you'll have the highway hard scramble.
Thank you, and we have one bridge left, is that correct, that we gotta get out of a bid? Okay. All right.
Oh, I was wondering, how much it cost us to engineer them beach bridge?
Greg can tell us. Engineer a bridge? What's it cost us to have those engineers?
Fifteen thousand.
How I do is open our cabinet up and find a bridge that fit and charge us fifteen thousand.
Put a stamp on it.
For simple.
Okay, elected officials and department heads. No one. Public comment, I'll start with that gentleman back in the back.
Should I approach?
You can if you want, or you can stand up right there, whatever you feel comfortable with.
My name's Pat Conger, Goss Ford. Just listening to the, you know, issues with jail. And I've known him since for a long time, always worked on the heart. Just an option on the financial part, and I practiced this for years on several occasions. First, uh, Mr. Brian, is that adjusted right?
Oh, this, no, this is just purely hypothetical, absolutely.
Well, when you're done with that hypothetical part, is it adjusted right or may, I mean adjustable or?
Would be adjustable, right.
Oh, so that's gonna change?
Sure.
Okay. Is there a way to make?
There, there could be, though, well, what I'm saying, for just the purpose of discussion, is if someone could have a ballpark number. So if there's been nothing that's bid out, there's been no proposals received, there's no, there ain't been a decision here. How we want it, do we want monthly payments, semi-annual, fixed, a- a variable, none, none of that. All, all that was being presented tonight is just so someone could have an idea, if we just talked about six percent, what, what kind of dollars would you put?
So basically, is this based off of the simple interest?
That's, that's, uh, ju- ju- just, just a number, so we can kind of.
No, 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 you're talking about, you know, what do you find, you come down to what you're gonna do financially.
Correct.
We're getting ready to sign on the dotted line.
Right.
Is that loan based on simple interest? Or is it based on fixed number that you have to pay back?
It, it, when it's done, it's gonna be on a fixed number of what has to be paid back, correct?
All right, so, and like I say, I've done this many times. You know, I'll just take it on a quarterly, by the month basis first. If I buy a car and it's ten thousand dollars, and my payment is a thousand dollars a month. If I make that, if I make that monthly payment four times, being that I pay it every week, that first week pays, you know, it accumulates no interest for three weeks.
Sure.
But you're paying the same amount of money. So every penny of interest from that first week on for three weeks goes to the principal.
Correct.
That happens next two weeks, the next three weeks, and four. And you continue that and you continue that. And at the end of that five-year term, you have paid that loan off in less than four years and it did not cost you a dime. Now, if you, if you take that down to a day payment, and I've done this, three hundred and sixty-five days in a year, you've got, you've got a monthly payment, but, you know, it's over, over a year. That's a certain number. So you take, you say, all right, I'm gonna pay that, you'd ironically, I can pay that every single night. And you say, you buy that number by three hundred and sixty-five, and you make that payment. But the bank's only open two hundred and fifty-seven days a year. So there is no posting of that money during those hundred and some days. So your payment isn't three hundred and sixty-five days, it's, it's based on two hundred and fifty whatever. So your payment is a little bit more, which is a good thing, because now you put all that much more money, a hundred and some dol- a hundred and some days of interest directly to principal. So if you, if you are able to amortize that and get it to remember, but what you're able to save over X amount of time, then you may be able to figure out a way to build a better jail, quit polishing the turf. Or figure out a way to know what kind of money you're gonna save and what's your, what your bottom line is and what you're gonna spend. You know, we're talking about eight hundred thousand dollars now, maybe about five hundred thousand over it, all right? Twenty years, and I did this, twenty-year loan, paying it daily, paid itself off in just over fifteen years. Every penny that I saved did not go to the bank, and it did not cost me one penny, not one dent to do it.
Correct.
So, so that's something for you to think about in, in when you're throwing all these numbers around, the big numbers. So you can, you know, maybe figure out, well, if we've got all this money that we're gonna save, maybe we can apply it down here. And, and have better options on what you're gonna pay.
Through everything you're saying, Pat, sure, definitely do. And, and once we get our finances in order to see where we're exactly at and what we have to work with, that, that'll definitely be an avenue that we're gonna look at.
And that's what you need to know, you have to have that number. But once you've got it, you know, you can figure out, you know, where you are today and where you'll be in fifteen years at that point.
Yep, exactly. And, and while you're here, we talked about closing the, end of Colros Road, that process.
Yes.
I- is in the process. We've already started that, the attorney's putting the paperwork together to close that down.
Oh, correct.
So I want to let you know that I called you back some time back and I didn't get a response, so now that you're here, I can tell you that.
Now, you know, on, on the plan, you know, that's divided into two different roads, basically.
I've had the building department already pull it up, uh-huh.
So, so Hudson's own both sides of that access road, all the way down to where it turns into Colros.
Yeah, I think the railroad owned quite a bit of that property through there as well.
It made it, it made it CSX, but that's not, that's not gonna be affected in the section I'm talking about.
Right.
And that's, and that's all I can say, one owner owns both sides of that access road, and they're willing to sign whatever they're able to get.
Yeah, and we're working on getting that done, yep, you're sure welcome. Any other comments?
Anybody buying a house right now, pay attention to what I just said.
Barry?
Yeah. Barry Marnett, uh, of Jacksonville Township. Uh, I heard this talk about all day about the percentage raise and things going on, stuff like that. And about, uh, I think it was like ten or eleven months ago, I told the county commissioners, the council about, I figured the interest rates were gonna go up. Might even go as high as ten percent before the end of the year. And in the last few months, from what I've read and seen, talked to, I think it's going to be worse than that. It looks like now, but I'm a little short. I think maybe it's gonna go up maybe like eleven or twelve percent. And as far as, um, the recession that I've heard mentioned a couple of times, from my understanding from people I talked to, I think the recession will probably hit us around about the end of the year. That's what I'm hearing. So if you're gonna do anything with your money, you might want to think about, you know, cutting some of the county load. But I think it's gonna get really adjusted here towards the end of the year. So I want to let you know.
Thank you, Barry. Yes, sir.
I did fleet maintenance for decades. You're very much smarter to maintain the same type of chassis. When you're by an idiot, when you share a compartment or you are, you, you get your maintenance set up with all the same parts, your mechanic is familiar with Chevrolet only. You're not jumping back and forth, shitty Dodge, Ford, whatever. I'm not gonna promote a one brand, but sticking with the same model or the same company is way smarter financially. And if you want more tax money, make Home County more attractive, make the roads.
You clean the rest of the month.
Yeah.
Coming back to money. Yeah, it's all about the money, anyone else? Yes, sir.
I just wanna start with Greg, uh, sorry, this has no reflection on you and your employees of County Highway. And this is concerning the last meeting, uh, commissioners, what I'm about to say. So I know you had some hard feelings going on with your stuff on social media. I, I, I know that, uh, things with highways and everything else, road service doesn't happen overnight. So a lot of people were shitting on you guys on the internet, I get that, I'm not one of those people. I'll come up and say it in person right here, like I'm about to today. Uh, you three gentlemen owe the voters and taxpayers of Home County an apology concerning some of the items that you said after you read off his statement last week. We're not all idiots here in Home County. Okay, I've lived here for a few years now, I don't consider myself an idiot, I know a few idiots. We're not all idiots, you are elected officials. Uh, you all will come up for reelection soon, okay? Sir, I believe you're coming up for reelection within here about a year, right?
Two years.
Two years. I- i- is your criminal charge finished yet concerning the resurfacing out there, or has that been vacated yet? Or, or you, you could possibly still be removed by a special prosecutor, is that correct? Correct. So you could be gone real soon. Okay, sir, I don't know exactly when you're up for reelection, I'll have to look into that, I didn't get to your.
Maybe in this term.
In this term, very good. I'm Washington Township, so Mr. Curry's my problem, not either of you. But you do work for the voters of Home County, you work for the taxpayers of Home County. So to refer to any of us as idiots, when we voice concerns about the roads, like this gentleman back here, that we gotta drive on every day, most of which will jar the fillings out of your teeth, if you're not careful, okay? We're not idiots voicing concerns over that, all right? I see roads getting repaved, it don't necessarily need to be repaved, they're being repaved over personal interest. Okay? There are roads in this community where our kids go to school on those roads. I'll talk about Flatwoods, for example. There's potholes on Flatwoods you could lose a Volkswagen in, okay? I don't know what the schedule is, it's not my business. I leave that to Greg. I'm the taxpayer and voter here, I'll stay that for now, for now. But if I, if I hear, and this is me personally saying this, I don't know if anybody shares my sentiment or not. And I care if they do, because I'm one of you folks that are taxpayers and voters in this meeting, gotta live here. If it gets to the point where that becomes a normal thing, where we're calling taxpayers and voters idiots, and we don't work for them, and Greg, you don't work for them, which I know you work for the commissioners, you're appointed by commissioners, so on and so forth, I get that. I'm a government employee. I get shit on as a government employee. I know how it is, I know how it feels. I work for taxpayers, I work for voters, I work for members of the community. It's not lost on me how I represent the people that pay my salary. I serve them. Would not go into a public forum and meeting as an elected government official and refer them as idiots. Any of them. I know in my professional capacity, I'm not allowed to call them idiots. That's a good way of getting a suspension date. Now, I know you guys wouldn't get a suspension date because you'd suspend yourselves, you're in charge. But think about that next time. I think if it continues to happen, as a member of Washington Township, I'll probably take action to try and vote you out next year. You know, maybe I'll run, maybe I'll find somebody that will run out of district two that won't sit up here and badmouth people in this community. There's only what, ninety, a hundred taxpayers in this community, something like that?
That's the tax base. The face local income tax.
Face local, yeah, okay. That's part of the problem we have, is showing the head nose on the head or the only head just back here, instead of making it more attractive. It's not really attractive when the government officials that run the county run their mouth about citizens that elect them. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Bill?
Some people aren't aware, uh, even talking to some of the council members. Our money for roads is generated by how many miles we have and how many passenger cars we have. So if you're driving a pickup truck and you buy your gas and your excise tax, you don't count that you exist in the divying of that money. Now, that's some, so archaic, the back, remember pickup trucks were rough riding, hardworking vehicles. Now, they're leisure cars. And I'm working with the State Association of Realtors to try to get the state to change that, because the rural counties are losing out. And a lot of people don't realize that. In our household, we got three vehicles, two up at a prep place. And the state needs to change that rule.
I know this treaty.
And, and I talked, President of the Council, she did not know the funding came that way.
No, our hands are tied on a lot of funds, Bill, because of that.
But there's gasoline tax being collected, but it's going to the communities that have a lot of passenger cars and send it back to the rulers. And again, that goes back, you know, back whenever pickups first started, they never probably drove over fifty miles from home.
Right.
This, this, a work vehicle, a farm. Now you see a big horse trailer and it's pulled by, you know, humongous, uh, vehicle that's pulling it. You know, and they're luxury vehicles. And so I'm trying to get a movement started, and I, we got a new director with our legal. And I, we got a new director with our legal affairs, public affairs, uh, person. He and I have spent some time talking about this, you know. He says, well, one of the things is the big cities say, we have four lanes to do it. Let's just be fair, let's count lanes, you know, because, because they, yeah. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, but if anybody can say something.
And we appreciate all comments. And, and it's definitely got to be at the state level, a, a, and it's, and as this gentleman mentioned here just a minute ago about our local income tax, we have twenty-one, twenty-two thousand people in the community, but we only have ninety-five, ninety-six hundred getting up and going to work every day. So the people that are still out there, that live here, that are retired on fixed income, they're not getting out and driving every day like the rest of us, so that affects the revenue that we bring in. So, a, as the gentleman sitting here in the front row is working on the housing development, and we very much hope that that gets up and running, uh, to produce more people. And, and we'll take every one of them.
I'm disabled, but still pay the property taxes.
It, not property tax.
No.
Fuel tax, when you get up and go to work every day, or if you're on fixed income, or you're, I'm not saying that you're not getting out and driving, but I'm talking about the folks that are on social security, you know, sixty-five, seventy years old. They're not getting up and going to work every day, so not buying fuel every day. That's kind of where we're at in the community with our people.
Only tax that I'm omitting is income tax. I mean, still be taxed on gas, food.
Right, exactly.
All parts.
Right, right.
But if you drive a truck, you're not counted in that.
That's another habit, exactly.
That statement, because how is the gas pump mill is putting gas in the car versus the truck? They take the pool of money that they've got invited by how many miles of roads we have and by how many registered passenger cars. What's kind of the system I said?
Yeah, and it comes from the state, it doesn't come from the county, yeah. Yeah. There's no other comment, do I hear a motion adjourned? Governor Sheen? Scott?
You have a policy.
That's right, Jim, I'm sorry, we got these two right here. Oh, we had two policy changes, I'll say.
Resolution to policies.
I apologize for that.
So commissioners, uh, last year, the liability insurance workman's comp combined, uh, only went up four point four percent. The idea this year is to keep that, uh, as close to four point four or zero. So all of these, this, uh, resolution and the two policy are directly related to the, uh, insurance, trying to keep the insurance cost down. This is Resolution twenty twenty-two zero zero seven, zero zero seven. This is a resolution establishing procedures in the event of claims filed against the Owen County's insurance policy for property liability, workman's comp, probable bill, incident. Whereas Indiana Code thirty-six two 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 establishes board of commissioners and county executive, whereas board of commissioners, Owen County fights this proposed resolution, put above health, safety, comfort, and welfare for the employees and citizens of Owen County. Whereas epic insurance is repaired, uh, for what we called it in the event of the claim with standardized forms for Owen County. Now, therefore, we are resolved by the Owen County Commissioners as follows. Section one, incorporation by reference, uh, the attached document entitled Owen County Commissioners, in the event of a claim, is hereby incorporated by reference. All included forms, property damage claims, first report of injury, general product and liability claims, other claims, and additional claims. Information are hereby in their entirety incorporated by reference. To, section two, distribution, uh, the attached document of Owen County Commissioners, in the event of a claim, shall be distributed to all department heads and elected officials. As, uh, this resolution shall be in full course expected. Immediately upon its adoption, publication required by law, passing adopted by the Board of Commissioners, Owen County, State of Indiana, regular meeting, held on today's date, month of twenty twenty-two. Owen County Board of Commissioners, Greg Green, President, Robert Curry, Vice President, Delta Voice Commissioner, attested by Sheila Reeves-Hawker.
Thank you, Jim. Do I hear a motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Bob, do I hear a second?
I'll flag it.
Have a second by Dale, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then Sheila, that, in the event of a claim, that would need to be distributed to all department heads. I have two personnel policies, those do not have to be read in their entirety. We have personnel policy seven oh two, this is for, uh, seven oh two is for drug-free workplace procedures. And you have policy seven one five, post-accident drug and alcohol screening. Both of these are recommended by the insurance company. Their effective date will be four eighteen of twenty twenty-two. You would need to vote on those separately. But the first one is a policy seven oh two A, and the second policy is seven one five. Glad these will be passed and adopted by the Board of Commissioners, State of Indiana, regular meeting, held on today's date, of twenty twenty-two. Uh, Owen County Board of Commissioners, Greg Green, President, Robert Curry, Vice President, Delta Voice Commissioner, and Sheila Reeves-Hawker.
Thank you, Jim. Do I hear a motion to approve Policy Number seven oh two? And seven.
Seven one five.
Seven one five, sorry about that. Do I hear a motion to approve? Make a motion to approve, have a motion by Bob, do I hear a second?
Flag it.
Second by Dale, all in favor? Aye.
And Sheila, should also be distributed to all the department heads and put to signatures.
And also too, real quick, the cybersecurity is a request of the insurance company, not by the county. I know there's been some issues with that, but it, uh, is not our policy, is part of the insurance program. All right, Sheila. You don't have anything? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion by Bob to adjourn, all in favor? Yeah, second by Dale, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. And I forgot to give that last gentleman.